This meeting will come to order. This is a meeting of the Administration Committee of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, January 27. We have one item on the agenda, Ordinance 2103, which is a renumbering of Ordinance 2033,[15.66][15.66]introduced in December. And since I am the sponsor of the legislation, I'll give a brief recap, since we've crossed over into a new year, and we have a new member on the committee. Basically, this legislation is dealing with code that was last updated in 1976, so 45 years ago, at least most of it. And just again, as a reminder, the administration is working on a second change in Title II, more, a broader and more substantial change than what's in this ordinance. Sections 1 through 3 of 2103 modify Chapter 2 of Title II about boards and commissions. Sections 4 through 7 modify Chapter 4 about council meetings. The only thing that I think was of concern at the last committee hearing on this was the section 7, which was about fiscal impact statements. And since we've, I mean, I trust that Mr. Flaherty has read the material and caught up on it, so I think we should probably get, since we only have an hour, less than an hour before the committee, the whole, we should go straight to the amendment that's been authored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith and Scamblery. So if, I think, I see them both, well, because we're, Scamblery is part of the committee. Who wants to present the amendment?
I can start.
Okay.
And then, could the meeting host also unmute Councilmember Piedmont Smith, so we can tag team as needed?
Please go ahead.
Again, this is amendment, proposed amendment number 1 to Ordinance 2103. As we've listened, most of us have listened to discussion on this on and off for several months now, and there seems to be a good deal of consensus around the notion that we want to understand as council members, the fiscal impact of legislation that we pass. The question becomes, how best do we gather that information? And I don't know that we have seen any consensus that the form passed, I think, first used in 2013, maybe, is actually the best or the only way for doing that. So this is intended to recognize the importance of understanding fiscal impact of the legislation, but to provide a little flexibility in how that information is actually presented to us. So I will certainly, or we could read this into the record next week. Is it helpful to read it aloud now, or do you all have it in front of you?
There's no need to read it out loud. We, the committee members should have familiarized themselves with it, and it's also pretty brief, so I don't know, whatever you want to do.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith, what did I leave out?
I think you covered it, so just for anybody in the, members of the public who might be here for the meeting tonight. So the Ordinance 2103 would totally delete the section of municipal code that talks about the requirement for fiscal impact statements. And this amendment is putting that back, but in a very simplified form. It's just one paragraph instead of having several paragraphs, and it just says, "All proposed legislation must be accompanied by a statement describing the impact of that legislation on the city's finances, including but not limited to revenues, expenditures, and any debt obligations." So it's not prescribing a certain form or certain format, and just simply saying, you know, we want to know what, if any, is the fact, what, if any, impact on the city's finances does the legislation have?
The only thing I would add to that is, in our original language, when we were kind of working this through, we included ordinances. And then, Mr. Lucas brought to our attention the fact that there are some resolutions that have financial impact as well by virtue of their connection to some bonding decisions. So we have, we have just moved toward the more inclusive word legislation, so all proposed legislation. Questions, how can we help?
Okay.
What thoughts and feedback do you have?
Thank you. Are there questions from committee members on the amendment? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, thank you. And I did re-watch your meeting, first committee meeting right before this, so I'm fully up to speed. Yeah, thanks for this amendment and the presentation. I still read it to be prescribing, not necessarily a particular form, like was recently developed for this section, but, but still probably prescribing a particular paragraph or section of supporting materials. Is that what you anticipate, that it does need to be pulled out in some, you know, specific way within supporting materials, saying, you know, here's the fiscal impact, even if it's not? Is that accurate?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith, if you want to?
Oh, yes, that's accurate. So it can be part of the memo that accompanies the legislation to explain the legislation, but it could just be, you know, one short paragraph or one longer paragraph, depending on the impact of that memo.
That's part of the reason, too, that we thought it helpful to include the phrase, "including but not limited to revenues, expenditures, new debt obligations." That's the stuff we want to know about, whether it's a form or two sentences or 10. We didn't feel the need to prescribe that, but this is the kind of stuff we want to know about, so we thought it helpful to spell that out.
I have more, but I'll defer to others.
Looks like Mr. Sims, oh, Mr. Sims, Councilmember Sims, do you have questions?
Actually, I did have one, and I think Councilmember Flaherty's first question may have covered it. But this paragraph would include, or would be expected to be included if it had zero financial impact as well. Okay, and I think, I think that was part of Councilmember Flaherty's initial statement, so I just wanted to be sure, so thank you.
Okay. All right, I'll take a crack. We have a sustainability ordinance passed in 2006. It calls for us to try to balance the economic, the environmental, and the social. Why are we singling out legislation just for its fiscal impact? What about the environmental impact of legislation on, say, a neighborhood or on a city park? What about the social impact of the legislation on a protected class of people of color, the disabled, on account of sex or sexual orientation? Why shouldn't we require a statement for those types of impacts as well? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I think we should consider all those things. In this case, there's something in our municipal code currently that says we require a fiscal impact statement. So I'm just saying, or my reasoning is, let's not get rid of that altogether, let's just make it a little easier to fulfill that requirement. You know, if I were starting from scratch, maybe I would not have the requirement at all, or have a requirement that, you know, covered social and environmental impacts as well. But I'm just saying, I'm looking at the code, it's there, I don't want to do away with it completely, because I think it is important, among other things. And so here's a simpler way to fulfill that obligation.
I guess my follow-up would be, how will this improve on what's been before? In other words, the vast majority of items will have no fiscal impact, we're just going to have to add a sentence or two, and it will become ignored as the lack of a fiscal impact statement has been ignored for many years? Don't you, aren't you concerned about that?
I think you are jumping to conclusions to say that this will be ignored. I think this will, this is a requirement that's pretty easy to fulfill, and I think we should be following our municipal code. I think it was an error that we haven't been for so long.
I'm sorry, I, I don't, I meant, I don't mean that the statement won't be created, I mean that the statement will be shrugged off, once, once it's there, that people will get used to it being no impact and it'll be overlooked. Aren't you concerned about that? That's what I meant.
I am not concerned about that. I have faith in my colleagues that they will read the memo, as always, that comes with legislation, and read that part of the memo just like anything else, and take it seriously. I don't really understand why they wouldn't.
Okay, thank you. Further questions from, from committee members? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, thank you. What about staff time? I know you all didn't list that, and I think, and for context and historic context for anybody watching, this has been on the books since maybe 1979 or even earlier, but hasn't been followed in many decades. It was probably just sort of forgotten at some point, but quite recently, we've developed a form to try to facilitate meeting this provision of code that's always been there. And I haven't personally found any of the fiscal impact statements I've seen yet to really be useful or provide like additional information. It seems like somewhat superfluous. Sorry, I got on a tangent. My question started with, with staff time, and I'm just wondering about, like, I guess what I'm getting at is, how will this requirement, which is even more flexible or kind of more open-ended, in a sense, give us meaningful information beyond, you know, in a better way than this fiscal impact form that we developed was doing? And I guess, among the things that I'm thinking about are, should staff time be factored in when trying to report on a fiscal impact? And also, what kind of, what about things that are unknown or unknowable? Because, you know, a particular policy might affect anything in the city, you know, in a variety of ways, in terms of obligations of staff time or other type things. So what are your thoughts on kind of those shortcomings in being able to say with precision what the fiscal impact is?
To sponsors, either one should feel free to go ahead.
Okay. I can share my reactions, and then Councilmember Piedmont Smith, please chime in. I think it's for precisely those reasons that this is, that this is an improvement. The opportunity to include this kind of narrative here, whatever that, whatever narrative makes sense for that particular piece of legislation, it's exactly why that flexibility was built in here. I think the form, the form is, as you've said, it's, I would characterize it as kind of clumsy, and we try and, we've tried to, you know, to shoehorn information into it, but I think a narrative will actually give us information that we can use and base our questions on. So I think it's, it's for precisely the reason that we do have different kinds of legislation, that we, that the narrative, I think, will, will be a better approach to that. In that regard, I'm not sure it will take any more staff time than it currently takes. These kinds of statements are built into all the app, the appropriation ordinances, kind of out of the box. I can't really remember a time when legislation came to us from administration or staff that didn't include a memo with it, that could include a paragraph or a couple sentences or whatever, whatever is needed to tell us about expenditures, revenue, and debt burden. So I guess I don't see this changing the demands on our staff. If anything, it simplifies it and, I think, gives us information in a way that's a little more helpful. Is it about Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I agree with what you said, Councilmember Scamblery, and as far as staff time, that could have a fiscal impact, of course, if, you know, if we're looking at legislation that could lead us to need to hire somebody or increase the FTE of somebody or decrease it, for that matter, then that should be discussed in a narrative. And, you know, we all know it's, in many cases, it's a best guess, but I think the best guess is best described in a narrative form rather than trying to come up with numbers that seem to be indicated by the more formulaic structure that we have now with the fiscal impact form.
Councilmember Flaherty, I want to make sure I understood your question. Were you asking, what would be demanded of staff time? I'm catching up, I get there. Were you asking, what will it require of staff to prepare these narratives, or were you, and how are we going to, are we worried about that? Or were you asking, how do we account for increased staff work as part of our, I guess I see that as an expenditure, so if we have to hire three new people to carry out an ordinance, their salaries would be among the expenditures?
It was, yeah, it was the latter, actually, that I meant.
Okay, my bad, sorry.
No, it's okay, certainly with, I wasn't clear, certainly with new hires or new roles, like the transportation demand management, you know, position or something, that's going to be pretty obvious. But I think there's a lot of things, you know, the towing ordinance we considered early this year, I think we probably talked about this at some level in the course of discussing it, but how many staff hours across various city departments and employees will be devoted to that in the course of a given year, and estimating, you know, kind of, you know, what that, what that financial impact will be in terms of that, the employee hours spent is kind of what I meant, and I think those things in particular are kind of sometimes unknowable prior to passing a legislation, and that's what I was asking about. But I think your answers were helpful, thank you.
Sorry for needing to go at that twice, so.
Councilmember Sims, do you have any further questions?
Thank you.
Okay, I'll take one more crack at it here. Let's say that council is considering an initiative that would require, like, it's April or it's November, and there's a proposal on the table that would require a new hire as a result. It could come from the administration, it could be maybe a request to the council, the council has at the clerk's office. In either case, there needs to be money added to an existing budget. Do you envision that there's ever a time that there would be an ordinance that comes forward that has such a requirement that wouldn't be accompanied by the appropriation ordinance that would fund the new position?
I think that there may be a situation in which position is repurposed, maybe, for another job that wouldn't require an appropriation. But, no, I mean, if it's a brand-new job and a brand-new project or task, then I suppose we would see an appropriation ordinance. I don't see what you're getting at.
Well, the point, I guess the point is, let's say that it's either a department or a council member who brings that ordinance forward, saying that we need to create a new program that requires a new hire. Like, if they know that it would cost money that has to be added to the budget, wouldn't you expect them to also have an answer for how to fund it? In other words, the appropriation ordinance would be the fiscal impact statement?
That's fine. If it answers how, how the proposal impacts the city budget, that's fine.
I feel like I'm missing one, your question or some element of it.
It makes the fiscal impact statement you call for of a given ordinance redundant, because it would have, because an app board is a fiscal impact statement by definition. So why would you need to redundantly say in the ordinance, well, this is going to have an impact on so-and-so's budget? In other words, no one is going to bring forward an ordinance that causes a new person to be hired without an app board.
So your concern is redundancy?
Yeah, in other words, why, that's been my concern all along, why, why bother?
I, again, I think that's, from my perspective, that's why a narrative format would be helpful, because there, there is language that might not necessarily find its way into an ordinance, but if staff wants to expand, I'm assuming the new hires you're talking about are people who are actually paid, so there are salary implications for that. A narrative is an opportunity to expand on that.
I don't, I think there may be a misunderstanding as to what this would require. It doesn't necessarily require, like, a separate document that lists the, or indicates what the fiscal impact is. It could be encompassed in the memo or even in the ordinance itself, describing what the fiscal impact is. So I don't see it redundant as being redundant.
I guess my point is that we've done fine without, in blissful ignorance of this requirement for many, many years. Can you think of any piece of legislation where the absence of this kind of fiscal impact statement was notable? I mean, I'm thinking of the Bearcat. There was a great hue and cry over the Bearcat, and one of the arguments against it was that it had a fiscal impact, but that wasn't actually a piece of legislation. And in fact, we, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, you authored legislation that prevented that kind of fiscal impact intra-category from happening again. But I mean, name for me, and a good, concrete example of legislation that neglected to make this statement, and it affected the reception of it.
I cannot name such an example for you, but I don't think that negates the importance of having a fiscal impact statement or understanding of fiscal impact. So I don't think, I don't see any reason to take it entirely out of our code.
Well, and just, for example, conversations I've had and emails I've gotten from constituents about this have said, don't at all take out, don't, you know, don't take out an awareness of fiscal impact of legislation, don't take out fiscal impact statements. And in every case, I've emailed them back and said, okay, just to make sure I'm understanding you correctly, are you saying that you want council to consider the fiscal implications of every piece of legislation, or are you saying you want us to use that particular form to do it? And in each case, they all said, oh, I didn't even know there was a form, that's fine, no, I just want you to be fiscally responsible. So I think it's worth, toward that end, I think it's worth including in code, I think the more flexible language takes into consideration, it provides us with more opportunities to get the kind of information we want without trying to shoehorn it into a form.
Thank you. Any more questions before we go to public comment? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, just a little more clarification, kind of following my first question and something Councilmember Piedmont Smith just said, about how it could be encompassed in a memo or in the ordinance itself. My initial question was kind of meant to tease that out. In cases where that's already included, or if it's just in the description, you know, either in the ordinance or in the memo, but not called out as its own, you know, section of the memo, is that okay? Like, as long as the fiscal impact is addressed in the ordinance and supporting materials or in the legislation and supporting materials somewhere, then this requirement would be satisfied? Or does it really need to have, like, its own section with a particular heading, for instance? And that's, and that's where I'm still a little unclear.
Isabel, or, I'm sorry, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
That's, that's a good question. I mean, I would, I would say to whoever is proposing the legislation, just cut and paste from wherever it is and, and put it, you know, with a heading that says fiscal impact statement, just so that it's easy for council members to home in on it. I don't know. Councilmember Scamblery, what do you think?
Yeah, I think, I think that kind of speaks to the reason for the choice of the word statement. In other words, talk to us about expenses and revenues and debt service and so forth, and if that's a statement in a memo that accompanies legislation, that's fine. If that is included, for example, in an app board by itself, that's, that's fine, too. It's intended to get us the information we want, not necessarily to prescribe the piece of paper that we use to gather it. Does that make sense? Is there a concern about that? Are you feeling like?
No, no, I guess I'm just anticipating the possibility. I mean, it was mentioned that in 2013, when this section was amended, it was because a member who was in the minority on an issue tried to invoke it to prevent the passage of legislation, if I'm remembering that history correctly. And I'm imagining a scenario where someone who's bringing legislation has included a description of fiscal impact in some capacity, but hasn't labeled it, you know, as such in a standalone section, and somebody saying, hey, you didn't meet that requirement. It's, it's probably not a big deal, I'm just, you know, that's where my head went.
And will come along, that's fine, too. What else?
Other questions?
I've got more, but I could wait until we come back from.
Let's, let's go to the public and have a second round. If there's no other questions, we'll go to the public. Is there any member of the public who'd like to comment on Amendment 1 to Ordinance 2103? Please limit your comments to Amendment 1 to Ordinance 2103. Please use the raise hand function in Zoom or type into the chat. Mr. Lucas, do we have any takers for public comment?
Yes, I do see a comment that came in over chat, if you give me just a moment. So Dave Askins with the B-Square Beacon comments as follows, responding to the idea that there isn't new information in the fiscal impact statement that isn't findable elsewhere, I think it's worth thinking about the utility of having the information culled into a neat, tidy, easily findable package. It might be compared to whatever utility that council members find in the council staff memos that accompany legislation. It's rare that I find anything is in those council staff memos that is not simply reciting what the administration's staff memo includes or else common knowledge, yet an argument can be made for continued inclusion of such council staff memos, based on the idea that they distill information in a way that makes the legislation more accessible to council members and the public. I think it's worth considering the benefit to the public of having a single spot to search for, assuming the phrase fiscal impact statement, if they want, if they want to easily find this kind of information. And I believe that's, give me a moment, it's a solid amendment, leaving open the door to add social, anti-racist, and environmental impacts in the future. And I'm, yes, that's it. Thank you. And other comments?
Last call for public comment, please use the raise hand function in Zoom or type into the chat. Last call. We'll come back to the committee for second round of questions. Mr. Flaherty?
Thinking about where there, this, this says all legislation, so I'm imagining things where there isn't much financial impact, we'd probably just say no, and I think there isn't one, or no significant financial impact. But the past language of this section did call out, I think specifically, the term, I don't have it in front of me, significant financial impact or major financial impact, I think was the, major fiscal impact was the language. This doesn't, this amendment doesn't say major. So thinking of, for instance, Ordinance 2105, as just as an example, we're hearing it later tonight, it's a proposed historic designation of the Boxman Mitchell Building. I don't, we don't own that building or property, unlike the core building, say, or, you know, which we will own. I can't imagine there being much of an impact beyond just the use of Mr. Herterich's time. In a case like that, just by way of example, would the fiscal impact statement just sort of say, there is no significant fiscal impact to this legislation, and would that be satisfactory? Should we include the language major fiscal impact in this amendment, or do you like it the way it is? What are your thoughts about that, where there's sort of a de minimis kind of impact?
Go ahead. One, two, three, not it. I think major was a very subjective word, and I think that made, that made it kind of hard for us to figure out, well, who decides what's major? So that gave us the opportunity to say, tell us about fiscal impact. If it's minor, say so, or if it's nonexistent, say so. So, yeah, I think the word major kind of caused more confusion than it eliminated. So I, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, I mean?
I agree. I mean, I would think that something like 2105 would just say no fiscal impact, because Connor Herterich's time was done before the legislation was passed.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll go to debate. Is there any comment on Amendment 1 from committee members? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I think this.
Thank you. I think this is really more or less a formality. So that we meet code as it's listed and not have those forms looming. But I think what's most important for this is that we specify something that could be useful for city council members to be aware of and consider as part of deliberations. We do it to a certain extent already with most legislations, even without what we're doing tonight. Most of that is included. App boards is, like you say, could be redundant, but those are about the only ones. I'll use an example that's much more current than going all the way back to our armored vehicle debate. And the example I would use, it's much more current, I think, is when we considered the request for the Black Lives Matter murals that were being painted. The fiscal impact statement was the cost of payment to the artists, as I understand, which probably would include materials. But it was clearly stated that the funding mechanism for that was funds that were earmarked for the Blacky Brown Arts Festival that had been canceled. So there was a fiscal impact for the mural legislation. But the overall fiscal impact toward the city would be minimal because we've already used funds that were earmarked, if that makes sense. So this legislation would ensure that that is discussed as part of the legislation. Say, here's the funding, here is the impact. Here's the funding, if you want to include that. And then you can surmise the overall fiscal impact. So I, I can see the value of that moving on so that we can somewhat end the future debate on its usefulness. And I also support this because I also think it's what I would call a door opener to other impact statements moving forward in the future. I think environmental was one that was mentioned. And we do hear some of those from the Environmental Commission and some of those impacts that are with certain projects, pretty much land use projects or developments. But that is part of the legislation as well. I am anticipating in the future that also there will be space to allow an impact statement basically for anti-racist impacts with certainly with legislation as it comes before us. So for those reasons, and I'm sure we'll broach some of these again in the future. But for those reasons, I support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Next, who'd like to speak? Mr. Flaherty?
Yeah, I'll keep this brief. I broadly agree with the reasoning that Councilmember Sims just laid out. And I appreciate the, the insights from, or the feedback from the sponsors of the amendment. I think, I think the narrative, the idea of a narrative is, is helpful and much less rigid than this form we developed as, you know, these categories, revenue expenditure net. Because there's things that don't fall neatly into those categories, some of which we've discussed tonight. And I think, yeah, just being able to sort of speak to what those are and, and why just basically identifying issues and flagging that for members of the public and, and council members, I think is useful. So I'll support the amendment as well. Thanks.
Councilmember Scamblerie, do you want to go last as the sponsor or do you want to go now?
Not necessarily. I didn't, my goal was to answer questions and have that conversation. I don't necessarily have any more comments to offer. Unless somebody would like me to speak to something.
No, but I mean, this is where we're debating and members may want to respond to what they hear. Mr. Sims?
I was just wondering, is it proper to call the question?
No.
Thank you.
That turns out.
No, no, it's fine. Thank you.
Well, so I'd like to, to comment on it. You know, I do agree that this amendment is, is an improvement of what's there, but it's so little an improvement as to not matter. Fiscal impact segments are theoretically a good idea, but practically they haven't been, or we would have been using them. As I argued in the previous committee meeting, consumers are already informed. We've established that app boards are already fiscal impact statements by definition and resolutions that aren't approving a grant have no impact. We hear the fiscal impact if the resolution is relevant. And I've never had a problem getting a reckoning of the fiscal impact of an ordinance when I've wanted it, with one exception that I'll mention in a minute. So whom does this serve? Is it serving council members? Is it serving the public? We're already a very thoroughly vetted budgeting body, as is the mayor's administration by statute and the state bureaucracy, the State Board of Accounts. Clamor over government costing too much is a talking point for citizens who don't believe in government at all. The kind of person who would argue fiscal impact to oppose something that may be a matter of human right, for example, the, maybe we shouldn't enforce rental inspections because there's a fiscal impact. Maybe we shouldn't protect people on the LGBTQI spectrum because there's a fiscal impact. I certainly do not espouse these ideas, but that's the kind of argument that I anticipate when somebody otherwise opposes legislation, whether they be member of the public or a councilor or a department head. What if a department head overlooks or perhaps intentionally doesn't want to cooperate in the determination of fiscal impact of an ordinance brought by a council member? What if the department head claims a catastrophic impact, but the council member sponsoring it asserts that that's an exaggeration? You know, there, I think the sponsors are enamored by the theory, the essential benefit, the essential benefit of explicitly putting a headline saying, here's the fiscal impact. But again, this is a policy that was ignored, all but ignored for at least four decades because it's overkill. So, so few ordinances have raised the question of their fiscal impact that no one has seen fit to enforce it. The amendment does nothing to say what the consequence is for the failure to abide by it. We can see what decades of failure have cost us in this currently vague, currently vaguely worded ordinance, the, the existing code. There's been no consequence. Thousands of pieces of legislation have passed with the missing fiscal impact statement unnoticed. We should already be taking these impacts into account as a matter of course. This is what council members are supposed to be doing, taking into account not just the fiscal, but the environmental and the social impacts. This is the definition of sustainability in the city of Bloomington in our code. But even this anodyne proposal potentially opens up cans of worms due to its continued vagueness. I don't believe that we shouldn't have fiscal impact statement. I think we need to define it a lot better. And while this amendment is an improvement, it's only very slightly an improvement. And I've said consistently that I'm not opposed to having a fiscal impact statement requirement to some kind. But I believe that those who would have one should come back with a new ordinance once it's much better vetted. I think that, that this this less onerous, but still vague amendment isn't enough. And I'm only saying that we should get rid of it now because what we have now is dumb and it's not working. We see the most dramatic results in reversion appropriation ordinances. When this money is changing hands, if there's a fiscal impact, if a department head's budget is going to be affected, you can darn well bet that council is going to hear about the fiscal impact on that department head's budget. So either they have the money in their budget to accomplish something needs to be done, or they don't and they'll object to it. Or they don't, but there's an app board to pay for it on following soon after. So again, I'm not suggesting that I actually want to see no fiscal impact statement requirement in code. But this is not the solution and its vagueness, I believe, compounds the problem. Define major, define impact in a way that isn't redundant. Write it better and come back with a new ordinance. But let's not continue to hold up this ordinance for a solution that is going to at best be icing on a cake. Are there any other comments? Councilmember Scamblerie?
Yeah, there was, there was a lot going on there. But just one thing that's stuck out in particular is the notion that I don't necessarily, again, I've only been on council a year and there are much more senior people here. But I don't sense council has ignored fiscal impact. We may, council may have ignored the practice of using that particular form. But I don't think council has ignored it. I think, and I think council is helped more by the opportunity to have more detailed information than can be provided in a table with a couple of columns. So in a sense, my hope and our hope as sponsors was that this amendment would get us closer to practices that have been helpful to us recently. Again, we, we ignored the practice of using that particular form that was developed in whatever year it was. But I don't feel it's accurate. Again, I'll speak for council since I've been on it. I don't think it's accurate to say that council has ignored fiscal impact statements. You know, I, I think we do attend to them. I think I, I can't help but think it almost does a disservice to council to suggest we've been ignoring fiscal impact. So I think we pay attention to it all the time. I think this just acknowledges that a form is not always going to serve us well. So.
Thank you. Are you done? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Thank you.
Is there any rebuttal comment? Seeing none? I'll call for, I'll just call members, I see them on my screen. Three.
Steve, you're frozen.
I didn't.
I'm sorry, you froze for me. So if you called a name, I didn't hear it. So.
Oh, yeah, Councilmember Scamblerie, your, your vote, recommendation vote on Amendment One?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
And I vote no. So that's recommended three to one. Which brings us to the ordinance as amended. Is there any, are there any questions on Ordinance 2103 as amended? Well, actually now, the amendment will have to pass muster with the full council, but that's a recommendation. Councilmember Scamblerie?
Yep, thank you. Couple of questions, as I look at, look at the section five of the ordinance. I have a question about the language, motions for referral to a standing committee shall be entertained before a motion for referral to the committee of the whole and shall be include the approximate time in which the committee will convene, and that's fine. Is there a reason that it has to, a motion to a standing committee has to be entertained before a committee of the whole motion could be considered? Could not simply a motion to refer it to some committee be sufficient, whether it's committee of the whole or public safety or administration or whatever?
I'm not sure I heard the whole question because I had another hiccup, but I think I get the gist of it. I think the point was that to try standing committees and to not simply put them on the books, but then do everything by committee of the whole. So this at least makes council think about it. That's what I think the logic was. Did that come through?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
So there's not necessarily a procedural advantage or anything. It's just an insurance that, that committees are given fair consideration. Is that an accurate way to characterize that?
I mean, I, I think the, the problem again comes with the the irregular way in which the Bloomington City Council uses committee of the whole. It's not meant to be, I mean, if you, if you look at Roberts, it's meant to be an exceptional use on rare occasions, not meant to be daily use. So, but because Bloomington has, because this council has done that for so many years, we needed to specify it in order to ensure that standing committees will be tried. And this is back in 2015, I think. And there weren't any standing committees at the time. When we finally did create one that wasn't a funding committee, the Landes Committee in 2018, you know, that was, I mean, that, that item was triggered. So I don't know. I mean, if that answers your question.
Okay. I have some other questions, but they're related to other areas besides that. So if, if you want to stay on this topic, go ahead. I'm done. But I also have some other questions later in other areas.
Okay, we can move on. Are there further questions on Ordinance 2103 as amended? As recommended to be amended for other members? Seeing none, we'll go back to, oh, Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit late because I'm trying to digest all that that I heard and how we've used to commit the whole all these years and, but it's only for rare and occasional use and shouldn't be used and even though it's worked fine in the past. But my question would be, by make, by, by taking a motion immediately from the entire council, what does that do with the president's authority of referral? It, it almost is like it supersedes that, even though I know the council could override the president's referral after it's made. So it seems like we've just kind of flipped roles and I'm not so sure I understand that. Can you explain that more or am I misreading it?
I, I'm afraid I lost a line that set up your question. My connection, I'm sorry, my connection is problematic. I don't know what to do about it. You said something about superseding. Please, could you restate the question? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it all.
It seems like that portion of section five, I think, or section six, one of them, where the president refers legislation to either committee of the whole or a standing committee. But that is taken away for the initial move of council to motion to assign it to a standing committee before the president has an opportunity to do that, even though the president's referral could still be changed by majority council vote of a following manner. So did we just flip those roles or is there anything else other than wanting to make the council think about it? I, I pretty much think we've all thought about it before it comes to us. But is this another step to ensure that we actually think about this legislation? I'm not so sure of the purpose of that.
Again, I struggled to hear it, but I think I got the gist of your question. Just a second here, I'm trying to. Okay. The, because the council had preferred the committee of the whole for so long, but that's not regular, I mean, they.
Steve, I think you're frozen again, or he's frozen for me.
Referral to. Sorry.
You've been freezing up throughout and it's hard to really follow.
I'm so sorry. Let me see if I can.
Well, I'm, again, I'm not so sure.
Right now?
Or you're still going in and out. And I'm not so sure how proper it is, but I'd like to remind our committee members. We have committed the whole starting in about seven or eight minutes.
Does anyone want to temporarily chair while Mr. Volins frozen?
Mr. Sims, do you want to jump in?
I think, I think he's back.
He's back.
What I would, okay, yeah, he's back.
I'm afraid I'm having to call for my phone. Can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, this is really confusing. So I, I, the, if if you can understand me, that I think the gist of the question was, are we somehow flipping an order? Maybe a little bit, but not so much that it's you know, requiring standing committees at the expense of committee of the whole. I think that the the point was that the
Steve, we lost you again. Or I did. Anyway, I don't know if anyone else did.
Yes, we did.
Yes.
Yes, you're in now.
Is this better? Okay, I've just, my wifi is bad. But I I don't know if I answered. Did you hear the question, Mr. Sims? Did the answer?
Actually not. I was wondering with the timing of where we are in time, is it proper to maybe take a motion to continue this at a later time or to take a vote as is? I'm not so sure. I'm not so sure what's proper.
We have a few minutes left. I felt like we had time to answer one more question if my internet connection was reliable. But I don't know if, did I answer your question?
I'm not so sure. I heard maybe a little bit. In response to my question, I think I heard that part. So.
Well, let me just ask.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Now, Councilmember Scambler has a question. I'm, I'm, I'm okay.
Councilmember Scamblerie?
I actually have several more questions for that I see, and obviously, we're not going to get to them. And so if there were a desire for a motion to have one more meeting on this and go through those, I think I would be happy to offer that motion. If that is the will of the committee.
That motion is in order. It's an order before a motion to vote.
All right, I would like to move that we continue discussion of ordinance 2103 at an additional meeting of the admin. Administration Committee.
Mr. Lucas, when would that date be?
Second.
Next committee date would be February the 10th. And I believe the full council at the regular session next week would need to further extend the time for the committee to report until the February 17th regular session.
Would you like to make that part of your motion, Councilmember Scamblerie?
Yes, I would. So the discussion be held. Matt second, or Councilmember Flaherty.
And and so just to clarify, what what the committee would be doing today would be to recommend that the full council next week extend the time for the committee to report until February 17th. So that an additional committee meeting committee can be held February the 10th.
Okay, that's the motion. Any discussion?
Yes, just so I'm clear, does that mean the next? Just so I'm clear, this next administration committee meeting will be scheduled on the 10th.
I I think so. I think that's our next opportunity.
That's correct.
Do you have a different recommendation?
No, I'm just seeking clarification. Because I'll have to deal with this on scheduling as well. So I'm just trying to keep everything clear. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Scamblerie, do you think that one hour would be sufficient as it was tonight?
Yes.
Okay, because then we can perhaps do it at 5:30 again in advance of other committees, but it's up to whatever else is on the schedule. I'll leave that to Mr. President. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, I'll go the opposite direction. Mr. Flaherty, let's say you to the motion.
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Ms. Scamblerie?
Yes.
And I say yes. So by the four vote, four oh vote, we recommend extension to February 17th regular session. And we hope that council will agree. With that, our business is concluded.